Four o'clock, let's bring our meeting to order. Mr. Patterson, would you lead the summation?
My gracious Lord have me, Father. We want to start off this meeting acknowledging you as a Creator and sovereign and that you're in control of all things. Lord, you know the situation here in Fannin County and all over the world. And we pray that you would just be with us regarding this virus, but even more so in our lives individually, Lord, that we will be doing things that are pleasing to you. We just ask that you could just take this meeting and let it honor you and always. And thank you for the citizens that are here, the newspapers, Lord. And we just ask a special blessing on everyone here and especially on the people of Fannin County, Lord. Thank you for these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
The religions do the flag of the United States of America and do the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, today we are meeting for one subject only, and that's for a discussion vote on the declaration of emergency, medical emergency in Fannin County. And what we will do today, each one of us commissioners will, we have something to say or a statement to make. And then we're going to invite Dr. Miller to come up to the microphone and basically give us an update as far as what's happening with the coronavirus. Not asking anything that's Hitler-related or anything like that, but basically just to explain that commissioners have not had the opportunity that I have to listen to you, meet with you as we have recently. And we'd just like you to give us a state of seriousness of this disease. And basically, we've got some things we're looking at today to enact immediately. And we may have a little back and forth with you just to make sure that we're on the right path for that. So we greatly appreciate you being here, sir. We'll do it. Yeah, good. It's not polite to make a doctor late, is it?
I'm ready. This is meeting number four today.
Well, we greatly appreciate. We know you're just swamped right there. Basically, Fannin County is not on an island. We have to assume that the coronavirus is a very unwelcome visitor in our community today. And after many meetings and discussions with healthcare professionals, the time to act is now. Our number one priority is the health and safety of our Fannin County citizens. When a large unplanned influx of people from other areas descend on a small rural community, it can cause supply chain issues on grocery stores and other essential services. This makes it hard on everyone, especially our elderly and infirm. Also, with our limited medical facilities, we cannot handle large numbers of patients during a pandemic. And those that come here that we normally welcome, that are at this point seeking a safe place in the mountains, are creating unnecessarily a risk for our local people. So this is a time that requires sacrifice on our citizens, on our business owners, and God bless them, our workers. But by pulling together to combat the spread of the COVID-19 coronavirus, I greatly believe that Fannin County will unite and will become stronger when we win this battle. Commissioners, any thoughts, Commissioner Patterson, that you want to state at this time?
Well, folks making these decisions like this is never easy. There's a definite rub between the economy and sacrifices Mr. Hilton just mentioned. We know some of the things we're looking at doing today is going to hurt the small businesses, okay? And that's sad because I've listened to people and say, you know, when they close their doors, their last thought, when they look at that small business, which they poured all their efforts into, is will I ever open the doors again? And we don't want that. We want all the doors in Fannin County to be opened again, you know? And it does take that economic sacrifice. But as Mr. Hilton pointed out again, we have got to put the public safety of our individuals first. This is a serious thing. And as far as I know, what I've seen, Fannin County has taken it seriously. These gentlemen back here at the back, everybody had to get their temperatures. And it, you know, every day we find out a little bit more. And right now, at this point in time, we haven't had the tipping point where we're on the other edge of the curve. But the public safety of all of our citizens, I think everybody in you would say, has to come first. Our elderly, all the way down to our children, little children, small children. So if the papers can print anything, this is a very serious thing. Coronavirus is real. Just cut your TV on or listen to the doctor in a few minutes. He'll tell you, it's a real thing. It has potential to do so much damage. That's why we've got to have our sacrifices now and make those tough decisions that we're making. And believe it or not, even though the declaration is good, some counties are taking a tougher stand than we are. But we believe in the heart of the people and we say in this that we want to encourage, urge, recommend. We're asking you to take that sacrifice that's very, very tough as a small business owner. But that's what's required, we feel like, at this point in time. That's all I have to say.
Go ahead, Johnson.
At this point in time, in our county, in our state, in our nation, in the world, it's uncharted territory for about every one of us. As I spoke last night, I never would have felt like, when this emergency declaration was even written up, that I was thinking of many different instances, why it would need to be used, that this was the last... This could be the last thing on my mind of why we would have needed it. It's really taken, it's taken me back to watch what's happened in our, you know, across the world when this first started, as to what's happened in the past two weeks just here in America. So in Georgia, it just seems like the, the numbers are growing. I think everyone expected there would be growth in the numbers. But at this point, where we're at in Fannin County, I just think that we have to put something in place that will, that will help with the situation because if not, there's no way we can ever continue to get better. And if you go at it half-heartedly and still allow some things on the others, I mean, it just seems to me that it'd be better to take a sacrifice now for a couple of weeks, everybody do what they can do to not permit any more spreading of this if necessary. I know there's going to be people on each side of this situation and this matter, and I know it's going to be gladly taken by some, maybe not so gladly taken by others, but it's just a step we have to put in place. You know, I think back to when I was first sworn in about eight years ago. My first duty was to protect the welfare of Fannin County citizens. Our public service is to, you know, make sure the health of all the citizens, taxpayers are put first in every situation. And I think there's not a more important time than now, and it's kind of brought it home for me. I never thought I'd be facing this, but it's here and we've got to make it, we have to make a decision. We have to make a, an action that's going to help the citizens of Fannin County and allowing people to come from other cities, other states, other places, and potentially spreading that here in our county, I myself can't stand for it. So I think it's near time we listen to the doctor, see what his recommendations are. I look forward to hearing that and moving forward with something to curtail any further spread of the sickness.
Thank you. Dr. Miller, would you mind coming up, please?
Of course. So thank you very much, commissioners, for giving me an opportunity to come talk with you. I think that I appreciate you taking the seriousness that I think we're all realizing that is here and making a, you know, a serious effort to help protect the people here in our community and our county because we've, we've seen what's going on across the country, what we're seeing in, you know, Atlanta is, what you know, they're calling these certain areas, hotspots. Atlanta, greater Atlanta is a hotspot. What we're looking at is Atlanta and greater Atlanta is behind New York by a couple of days, a week, just based, probably within a week of what's going on in New York, looking at statistics. Those things are starting to happen in Atlanta. Emergency rooms and hospitals are starting to get overrun there and they're getting to a point where it's really business straining on their medical community. And I think they're just now implementing the things that we're talking about here in our county. And I can tell you that they would be, looking back, they probably would have liked to have done the things, what we're doing now a few weeks ago. And I think where we look at now, we had our first case in our county, you know, yesterday was reported. I think it's important to note this, so when we get a positive case, what we're really looking at is we're looking through our rearview mirror. Those cases, those positive cases are about a week old most of the time. You have to think about, most of the time when you get a positive case and they presented a week ago, they probably got around someone about a week to 10 days before that. So you're really looking about a 14-day window as far as how someone got the disease and spread it to around to other people, okay? So when you think about that, you think about, well, what was happening in our area around that time and extrapolate that forward. So it's going to be, there's going to be more folks that get it during this timeframe that the decision we're making today, unfortunately can't help a week ago. But places like Atlanta, they're doing things now, they're well beyond where we are in our county. So we're going to have a significant impact on the number of people that get affected here. And we're going to have a significant impact on how much that strain would have otherwise been, you know, on our healthcare system. So I think you guys are ahead of the curve. And that's the goal. You guys hear about the curve. We all see this curve that they show where it goes up and then comes down. And we want to, and you hear about the term flattening the curve, right? So what we mean by flattening the curve is that we just want to try to prevent as many people getting sick in a short period of time that overwhelms our system. So if we can prevent that spread of disease from happening more quickly and allowing people to be home and not to congregate together, that prevents that infection from spreading as quickly and overriding our healthcare system. So by implementing the policies that you are going to be looking at today, you slow the spread, which means fewer people get infected at one period of time, which means it doesn't overwhelm our hospital system. We have the capacity at our hospital to put people on respirators. We have that capability. That's ultimately what ends up being the final stage of treatment for a lot of these people. What we do is try to put them on a respirator and just wait for the virus to eventually go away. And so if you get too many people in one period in one place that require that respirator, that ventilator treatment, you overwhelm the system. So we're trying to ultimately prevent that, and your actions are going to do that. You know, I've been resident of Fannin County here for almost eight years. I, they've taken me under their wing and this is, this is my home. And I think here, that sense of community, that sense of taking care of your neighbor is what we all kind of ingrained into our system. I know the decisions you're making are part of that, that fundamental idea. And I think here in the county, what I hear from people is they're ready to take that step themselves. And I think you guys giving them the guidance to all kind of be part of that community, to take care of each other, to take care of the elderly, frail population that's most at risk, I think is what everyone wants to be a part of. And we know that there's sacrifice, but I think people often sacrifice for their neighbors. People sacrifice and do things for each other because that's the kind of people that are here in Fannin County, and that's why I love it here. And so I have a lot of faith that this community is going to respond just like they would for any process and band together and take care of each other. And I appreciate everyone's support in that. And I know there's a lot of people in the community that are doing what they can to try to help our healthcare system, and I do appreciate that. So that's kind of where we are right now. I think that's the rationale behind the social distancing and the interventions that you're looking at making and why it's so important to our healthcare community. I can answer any questions about, you know, the science or the background. And as you said, this is, things are, this is uncharted, we're in uncharted territory. Things that we may have thought we knew about yesterday can change tomorrow. Recommendations that we see today may be different down the road. The one thing that hasn't changed throughout this is that we know that the more people that are together, the more likely they are to spread this disease. Social distancing has been the one and only treatment that we know works. All other treatments are still in the air. We're still testing those. But not, you know, washing your hands and staying without, staying that six-foot radius away from people, and if you don't have to get out in the community and go around and be around other people if you can prevent, that's the best treatment we can do. And the more we can implement policies and plans that prevents that, that keeps that from happening, the better we're going to be off.
Dr. Miller, of course, we've had meetings, conversations here recently, and the most difficult thing is trying to figure when to go to this level. And, you know, something you expressed quite eloquently is, you go out too early, you know, you miss the big wave and you're overwhelmed for that. You go too late and you're way behind the curve. So that's been our struggle, is that we've had these many calls and contacts from the community saying, do something. Well, you know, we want to do the right something at the right time. And that's, you know, we don't know whether it is or isn't. We're doing, but we're doing things based on information from professionals like yourself. And that's been our whole goal, is being aware of this, being aware of other counties, what's been happening, realizing that it's slowly creeping up this direction. But the idea was, when you put, implement these kind of procedures and declarations, that it really affects people's lives and businesses and trying to do it at the right time. And I appreciate your guidance on that. Maybe I should have forwarded some of those calls to you.
I think you're right. I mean, right now, like I said, we're, we're driving by looking through our rearview mirror right now. And I think, how do you predict, predict what's in front of you when you're looking at your rearview mirror? It's kind of hard to do that. But you do your best based on what you think is going to be in front of you. And I think we, with us having a case here, and that being probably looking at a 14-day window for interaction, things like that, that the likelihood of us having more tests, and we have several that are pending right now within the county that we know of in the hospital system. There are other tests that are being done through the Department of Health that are independent of the hospital system, that we won't know about those tests until it shows up on the, on the evening update. So we're, we'll have more cases here. It's inevitable. But I think when you look at the timing, that we're getting this right at the very tip of the bottom of that curve. And if you're right there, that's the sweet spot for trying to keep that curve down. I think if you want to look at a time, now, now is that time.
Commissioners, any questions for Dr. Miller?
Dr. Miller, you mentioned testing, and you also alluded to the positive person that we've had just recently in Fannin County. Just so everybody knows, and we've got tested here in Fannin County. And how long it takes, I mean, we've had a lot of questions, as commissioners, of course. Says, well, you let the cat out of the bag. You waited and waited and waited, and now we've got, we've got somebody that's positive and now it's among us. And so, you know, the criticism is there. Tell us how long usually it takes to get a test back and then how much testing we have here in Fannin County? Some people didn't even know that we could have to test in Fannin County, thought we may have to go to Atlanta or other places like the other?
That's a great, that's a great question. And I think it's been kind of in a state of flux. Initially, we didn't have, we had very, very limited supply of testing early on to the point where we really could only test people that could get admitted to the hospital. In fact, a lot of places early on in Atlanta were doing that same process at several other larger hospitals. Because of that limitation in test, it allowed for a lot of people, we know that 80% of people don't need to be in the hospital that have this, if not more. Those, those numbers are changing every day.
Even the ones that are tested positive?
Right. Of the people that not have it, the ones that need to have in-hospital evaluations are limited, or not very many, it's not, only 20% of the people may need to be in the hospital. And because of that limitation that Atlanta had early on in their testing, it allowed for a lot of people who weren't tested to go around that community and spread it around because 80% of people weren't tested. And so that's why Atlanta has gotten into the circumstances that they're in, is because of that early limitation in testing of who had it and who didn't. They've gotten a lot better. We've never, we were never faced with that choice of not being able to test people that we didn't feel like needed tested. All along, we've been going based on the CDC guidelines. The CDC has very definitive guide on who should get tested. They make, except, they have certain testing criteria for people that will have healthcare workers or people that are first responders and how we might test them differently for a number of reasons. One, because of their exposure risk. Two, because we want them back into the workforce because we don't want to have a limited workforce in our healthcare community. But there's specific criteria, and we're using that criteria to determine who, who gets tested at our facility. And then we're also recommending people call the Health Department as an alternative resource to get testing. And they're allowing for certain testing to happen through the Health Department channels, and they have a location that they're deferring people to at Town Dalton and Mary Hatta. But we're doing testing within our outpatient group. We're doing testing within our, within our emergency room and of course, within the hospital. And so we have the capacity to test folks here. And like I say, fortunately, we've been, you know, we've been doing, implementing tests for the last, well, since really they were given us the ability to do testing, you know, three weeks or some odd, three, four, four weeks. And so fortunately, we've had all normal tests that have come back until yesterday when they, we had a test that showed up positive and that Department of Health reported. So that's kind of where we're at when it comes to testing.
And I heard that the time lag, this person, most time, it takes at least five to eight days?
It does. It depends on the test, but for the ones that we've been able to implement here, it's been somewhere between five to seven days. Some of that has to do with how long it takes the test to do. Some of it has to do with the fact that there are backlog. There's not very many, all these tests go to these regional centers that do testing for a significant chunk of the country. So they all get kind of bulked in together. And so that causes a little bit of a backlog for us getting those results back. I know that they're, they've approved some 24-hour test options that are being looked at by the FDA. The challenge with that is that getting them into the different facilities and having the machines that can do those things easily accessible. So that's going to take a little while for some of those 24-hour tests to be able to be truly accessible to the general public. But we're looking at those things and we hope to have, as soon as we have the capacity to do that at our facility and we feel like it's a safe and effective way to do it, we're going to try to do that as well. But it's just going to take some time for us to be able to get, get that capability. So in the meantime, we're just following CDC guidelines and doing the, doing the tests that take a little bit longer.
The, the information you shared, what, what my concern is, is that the lag, if I'm in Cobb, if I live in Cobb County, and I'm a neighbor of Fulton County, and it's understandable why a lot of these people feel the way, and that's why I feel like that actually needs to be taken. And I'm feeling good today. And, you know, I just want to, you know, that you keep here in Fulton County, Fulton County, Fulton County, I'm going to go to the mountains. I'm going to get away from here for a week or two. That's the problem I feel like we face now because it would be, it would be, we're all human, you know? You get away as far away from something as you can. And that's, that, I think that's a concern that Fannin County has, is they get here and then three or four days later, maybe they start feeling worse. And I think that's the, the most important factor.
Well, I think that that's a big issue. And I think that, you know, the, and we want, you know, I'm, I'm not a, you know, I'm a healthcare professional, looking at it from the economic side, it's not my area of expertise. But if you look at, you spin it from a health perspective, if you bring, if those places are seeing people that are coming up from areas that are hotspots, your workers are going to get sick, and then they're not going to be able to work, and then you won't be able to have your business be effective either, not to mention the fact that it's beginning to spread it within your community, which creates another, you know, health concern. So I think that, that, you know, the, there's, there's a, you know, there's a health impact from, from all aspects, not just because you're trying to, you know, look at what, you know, the business is saying of and hoping that, that, you know, the influx of people or people going to the business will keep them solid. And I think eventually their workers are going to get sick, and that's going to create another, you know, issue as well. So, you know, I think we want to protect those, we do.
Any further questions of Dr. Miller, commissioners?
Thank you very much. And if you have any questions, commissioners, please, I'll make sure that Stan shares my contact information. I'll be happy to give you any guidance from a medical standpoint and be able to help you all with any questions that may come through you. I'll kind of help in any way. We greatly appreciate what you do for us. Thank you all very much. Thank you, sir.
Dr. Miller, if you just could tell us real quickly, what should people do, I mean, most people have heard, to see if they should come to the hospital, wait it out? What's that?
That's a very good question.
Definite line?
That's a very good question. I like that, this is a good opportunity for us to reiterate that.
Sure.
So there's, there's kind of several different, you know, avenues. And we're building calls in which the first thing they should do, if they have, they have some concern about their, if they're sick, if they have, you know, what you're seeing on, you know, the news about the symptoms, respiratory symptoms, deep cough, fever, things that sound like the flu, you know? If you're having those types of symptoms, the best thing you should do is call your doctor's office. Let them know what you're experiencing so that we have the ability to give them the appropriate directions. At our clinic facilities, we're trying to prevent folks from coming into our offices. So we're trying, so we are talking to people over the phone and determining, well, should you really be coming in? Should you go to the emergency room? Should we recommend that maybe you qualify for testing and we can have you just stop by and we'll do a test without having to interact with our, the most of the staff? We can send you the back door, do something even from your car. So we're trying, that initial phone call to your doctor's office can help to give you a lot of direction. Same thing goes if you feel like you are very ill and you need a, you know, need EMS to intervene. When you call them, you talk to them about their symptoms. Robert has, and their team has specific protocols that they want to have in place. And the reason for that is to protect our healthcare workers so that we can wear the proper protective equipment before we go in and assess those patients. So if they call us ahead, we can do that and we're less likely to spread the disease. What we don't want is a large group of people either just walking into their doctor's offices or walking clinics without making that call, or people going to the emergency room with mild respiratory symptoms, thinking that that's their avenue to mild respiratory symptoms thinking that that's their avenue to get a test. What that's going to do is create bigger problems and clog up the healthcare system. Ultimately, in a lot of situations, they may not get a test and, and, and they'll be upset. And I think if we can give them guidance by not doing that, it would help out everyone involved, help themselves out because they'll get better, they'll get a better guidance. It'll help out all of our healthcare workers as well. So thank you for bringing that up.
But a phone call is the first step.
Phone call is the first step. And we'll guide and direct people to what we do. We have, our nurses have been answering calls all day at my office. And the other thing we're doing at our office is I'm, I've been doing, today I saw 15 patients in my office, they were all over the, over telemedicine. We talked, we had, I saw on a video on their phone and I was on my computer and we talked and did the visit and it worked out wonderfully. And I think you may see a lot of offices trending towards that because the people who are most at risk are those that go to the doctor's office most often, you know? They're the ones that we're trying to help.
Yes.
And so we're looking at ways that we can maybe talk to them over the, over the computer, do a telehealth visit, and then if they need services, our home health, I mean, technically, you know, they're under home court, they're, they're the definition of someone who's homebound right now. We can do a home health visit for those patients and they can have a nurse come out, assess them, do blood work. And, and so we've used that partnership and I think that's working very well for our patients here in the county because, you know, even though everyone's thinking about the coronavirus, that doesn't stop all of their healthcare issues from happening. Other medical issues are still in people's, you know, daily lives. And so we can't shut down our systems by just thinking about the coronavirus. So we're doing these things so that our other healthcare problems don't cease or stop or we end up having patients get sick because they're not getting appropriately managed and treated. So that's what we're trying to do. But thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any further discussion a thought before we read the emergency declaration that we have before us?
Commissioner, I'd just like to thank all the healthcare professionals, EMTs, nurses, doctors, Sheriff's Department back there, I am a first responder to everybody, because it's, it's, it's a tough thing. And I know that y'all have been overloaded and appreciate all your extra efforts in this time of need for the people of Fannin County. I wanted to make sure that I said that. We sure do appreciate all, all that you do and all that you have done.
I'm not going to read this ordinance in its entirety. I'm going to read the highlights. It will be made available to you, each of you, for any scrutiny or any questions. We will, after we vote, if the press and media have some questions, we'll be glad to entertain those and try to answer those for you. The emergency declaration and ordinance. Whereas Fannin County, a political subdivision of the state of Georgia, is experiencing events of critical significance as a result of the coronavirus hereinafter referred to as COVID-19. And whereas, as the Georgia Department of Public Health has confirmed positive cases of COVID-19 in Georgia, including fatalities caused by COVID-19 statewide, and there are confirmed cases in the North Georgia Health District, which includes Fannin County. Whereas, medical professionals have advised that if COVID-19 continues to spread in Fannin County and the rest of Georgia at a rate comparable to that rate of spread in other affected areas, it may greatly strain the resources and capabilities of county municipal governments, including public, public health agencies that provide essential services for containing and mitigating the spread of contagious diseases such as COVID-19. And the situation may become too large to be handled in its entirety by the normal county and municipal operating services. Whereas, a critical component of the public response to the COVID-19 pandemic is to practice social distancing by minimizing contact between people residing in different households as much as possible. And it has been evidenced that people in Fannin County continue to gather in large numbers in enclosed spaces where social distancing cannot be effected. Whereas, the governor's order, executive order issued on March 23rd did not include statewide application of certain measures that the Board of Commissioners of Fannin County deems necessary within its jurisdiction to attempt to minimize the spread of COVID-19 and prevent or minimize sickness, injury, or death to people and damage to property resulting from this public health crisis. Whereas, the Fannin County Board of Health did on March 25th, 2020, adopt a resolution, Fannin County Board of Public Health, COVID-19, which provided in part a recommendation that all tourism accommodations be closed during the duration of the COVID-19 pandemic. And the provisions of this section, and this is important, shall not apply to persons acting in the following capacities. Authorized and essential law enforcement personnel, essential healthcare providers, essential personnel of the county, National Guard or federal military personnel, firefighters, emergency response personnel, and essential personnel or volunteers working with and through the county EMA, Emergency Management Agency. Does not include authorized and essential utility repair crews or citizens that are seeking to restore order to their homes or businesses while on their own property or place of business. Other authorized and essential persons as designated on a list compiled by the emergency EMA director and/or the sheriff of the county. Therefore, it is hereby declared that a local state of emergency exists within Fannin County. For the duration of the declared emergency, all Fannin County residents are encouraged to shelter in place. All non-essential businesses are encouraged to close, work remotely, or at a minimum, practice social distancing within the workplace. Now, we have a list, which is just about too many to go over, of personnel, of businesses that are considered essential business. We received this information from the American, the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, and we're following their guidelines. This will be made available. Covers a wide range of businesses and activities in the county that will be, continue to be Now, on the downside, all businesses that provide services that normally cater to tourists as well as Fannin County residents, including but not limited to escape rooms, miniature golf, zip lines, hall water-related activities such as rafting, rental boating, floats, commercial swimming pools, movie theaters, and concerts are prohibited during the pendency of this ordinance. In addition to the foregoing, it is deemed to be determined by the Board of Commissioners that short-term rentals, hotels, bed and breakfast businesses, collectively tourism rentals, are businesses that facilitate non-residents of Fannin County by being able to stay overnight in groups that often in excess of the number prohibited by the governor, and they purchase goods and services while mingling with residents of Fannin County, Georgia. Otherwise posing a high risk, however unwilling, of transmitting COVID-19 from other jurisdictions to residents of Fannin County and falling ill while staying in said vacation rentals and potentially causing unbearable and unsustainable strain to Fannin County's healthcare system and public safety personnel. Fannin County relies on and is designed to accommodate tourism and tourists in a non-pandemic situation. However, in a pandemic situation like now, our public hate, public health and safety must be protected. Therefore, the following shall immediately go into effect following adoption of this ordinance. Number one, any person who is a resident of a state or county subject to a stay-at-home order or stay-at-home restriction and who is not currently physically present in Fannin County, Georgia, shall not be allowed to enter the county limits during the period this ordinance is in effect. This shall not prohibit vehicular traffic that remains on state or federal highways within the county limits and does not voluntarily stop within the county limits. Number two, all tourism rentals are hereby, hereby declared non-essential businesses and must immediately cease all operations except minimal basic operations as hereinafter defined. Number three, any customer currently occupying, physically present, a tourism rental under a paid reservation tendered prior to March 25th shall be allowed to complete the original reservation period, but shall not be allowed to extend. All other customers must vacate the tourism rental within 48 hours of this ordinance going into effect. No tourism rentals, number five, shall accept reservations during the state of emergency and is hereby put on notice that each tourism rental should alert any potential customer that there is a chance provisions of this ordinance may be extended. Number six, nothing herein shall prohibit a tourism rental business from renting to a resident of Fannin County who certifies in writing that the rental is to, A, facilitate compliance with this order or any order issued by the president or the governor or any agencies or departments. That tourism rental will only be occupied by residents of Fannin County, Georgia. Number seven, further, tourism rentals rented and occupied solely by public safety or healthcare professionals or immediate family members of the same or also allowed who are working within the county or within an immediate adjacent county and are expressively exempt from this prohibition on rental contained herein. Any violation of this section shall be punishable except for herein and general law. It shall be at the appropriate time and after appropriate due process grounds for termination of any business license, occupational tax certificate held by any tourism rental business. Number nine, any agreed tourism rental business or party may appeal on a case-by-case basis the application to said business by filing an appeal with the Superior Court of Fannin, Georgia. Number five, article number five, this, let me make clear, is not authorized to do anything beyond authorizing the Director of Fannin County's Emergency Management Service to activate a curfew. We're not enacting a curfew at this point. Under these conditions, the EMA Director can authorize a curfew after notification to the Board of Commissioners of that need of a curfew at least 24 hours before implementing. In addition, this notification to the public via the county NICSIL system has to have 12 hours prior to the implementation of the same. If enacted, a curfew would be imposed from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Residents unless exempt individuals shall remain in their homes or on their property during the curfew period. And that would apply back to the exempt employees, officials of the county, and those that are providing essential service. They would be excluded from that. And that's important not to interfere with normal commerce that is necessary for the community to continue. Article six, violation of any term or provision of this ordinance shall be punishable by a civil fine of $1,000 per violation. Any day that a tourism rental is conducted during the pendency of this ordinance shall be and is a separate violation. This ordinance shall become and is effective following the approval of the Fannin County Board of Commissioners held at 4:00 PM on the 25th day of March 2020 and shall remain in effect until 11:59 PM, April 13th, 2020, or until extended, rescinded, superseded, or amended interiving for the Fannin County Board of Commissioners. Commissioners, you have any thoughts or anything further before I ask for a vote of this?
I don't know. Do you have a?
I have none.
Commissioners, I will make the motion that we declare Fannin County a state of emergency through our emergency declaration and ordinance based on what has been discussed here and read out today. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Before I ask for a chairman, I will ask the members of the media here if you have any questions. And please understand, this has been a very, very fast-moving situation. We may not be able to answer your questions. This emergency declaration ordinance will be made available to you as soon as possible. It should answer a number of your questions, particularly the area of exempt employees and businesses that are deemed viable to the county. Any questions, man? Miss Hall, do any questions?
When do you think that will be available?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, I believe, here.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Pritchard?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We appreciate you coming here and we wanted to keep this meeting depressed, but you want to ask her, please, if you got a question?
I'm one of the mental bluff riders from the editorials.
Right.
Now, what about fishing? Said, shut down, you know, all water parks and stuff, but state parks and lakes we shut down for maple fish, for, you know, catching fish for breeding.
We don't have jurisdiction over state parks. If you're the state farm.
Well, I'm talking about, you know, the lake itself and stuff.
We don't have jurisdiction over that.
What about the river? What about the river?
You can be in the river as long as you're less than 10 people. If you're more than 10 people, you've automatically violated the state.
This would be in the same vein as, as walking and doing things like that that people do as long as they're maintaining social distancing. I don't see any issue with the county. That's.
Because they're running advertisements on the radio, you know, where your kids are at school taking a pitch.
Right.
You stay six foot, ten foot away from the next person.
Sounds like a good activity.
I think that's fine.
Commissioners, I'll ask for a motion for a chairman.
Make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned and thank you folks for being here during a very difficult time.